At six o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order. Everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first, we have department and board updates and requests. The building commissioner, Joe, that's you.
So with us, we have John H. U. Her email to the board. My intention is to appoint John to the position of building commissioner and like then invite John maybe to take a seat and just very brief introduction.
When you sit, you will take off.
Yeah, okay.
Because if not, it's a real surprise. And that's probably going to be the hardest part of the meeting is not to kill yourself in the chair.
So John met with a number of town officials, went through, myself, Sandy, met with Dennis, kind of toured the community center. And still said, yes, would like to be joining up there. So yeah, that community center, it's, there's a lot going on there. So HVAC side. So just like opportunity for John, just to sort of briefly talk about himself and.
The floor is all yours. Welcome.
Excited to get started. This has been a big change for me. I'm ready for it. Instruction has been my background from my life. I've been doing this since I was 16. There's a great path for me to be able to do instruction without working 70 hours a week. I've heard that no, I'm leaving. Think it's a great good for me. Something a little jealous. I think it's good that.
Good. I know. I was excited. I think my first question was, do you have practical experience? Have you swung a hammer? And you have it in all facets. And I think Dennis is probably thrilled that you're going to help with a lot of the facilities. I think you're going to be a good fit from what I've seen on paper. Welcome. And I know. Any other comments?
I would just say welcome to the team. And you know, we appreciate you stepping up and doing it. And it's a great growth opportunity. It's a development opportunity. There's a lot to learn as you get to know the town and the people and the process and all the things here. But it's like you said, it's sort of, it's, it's great to start and get your foot in at this level to be able to learn and grow. And sort of the future is bright, right? Like, there's a lot of opportunity to contribute and add value and be a valuable member of the team. As we move through time. So it's a, it's a great group. It's a great organization. It's a great community. You have a lot of support around you, both sort of management support and leadership support. And you know, we're all here, part of the team, trying to make things work as effectively as we can. So welcome aboard. Appreciate it.
Like, thank you for joining us. And I think you'd be a great fit for building and facilities, actually. I have to ask you a question. Do you have any relatives H. U. in Gravton?
All of them.
Doc H.?
Thanks. Doc is my grandfather's brother.
Worked with Doc. That's good. There you go. Welcome.
I think you'll find Upton's a very small town, but we're very welcoming. And don't be afraid to ask. There's lots of helping hands. And I think, I think we're a pretty sociable group. We have our quirks, but you know, I think you're going to fit in well. So. Do I hear a motion?
I move that the select board vote pursuant to section four, a subsection I of the Town Manager Act to approve the town manager's proposed appointment of John H. U. as building commissioner.
I second the motion.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thanks for coming in tonight. Welcome aboard. Next, ESS, home heating and energy assistance program.
Thanks a lot. Thanks.
It's a very, yeah, well, I think you guys heard it and you saw the, like, nobody believes me till like. Yeah, exactly. They take a flying back into the TV screen. Oh, they can set the sport out of it so good. He's over there on the shows. But yes, I know. The first time I sat over there, I was like, Lord, Kate. So welcome.
Thank you. I'm here for more support. So I'm going to turn it over to Katie in a second. But just the background of, you know, when I came in, almost more than halfway through fuel season, I was seeing how hard it was. You know, SMOC had a really hard time with little requests and getting support to people last year. So I saw right away that there was a huge gap either with people who didn't qualify for SMOC or people who were kind of falling in between the programs. And you know, Katie would come to me to try to figure out how we might be able to work with these residents. So this, this program that she devised and we'll talk about it, it's really to try to be able to help those people that fall in those gaps and make sure that everyone's supported, even if they're not qualifying for some of the programs that exist. So. So most of you know that I handle fuel assistance in my office. There are various programs that I work with that we navigate throughout the fuel assistance season, which runs from November 1st through April 30th. The fuel assistance programs will offer monetary support to residents in need during those months. So any fuel costs that they acquire throughout those months, they're able to support. The main organization that I work with is SMOC, which is out of Framingham. And they're a great program. I will start off by saying that. This is my third season working with them. The first season seemed to go fine. Last season I was out for part of it and it was not fine, not because of that, but because there were a lot of staffing changes. There were a lot of budget changes and it was a lot of wait times for residents who were applying. I help with the application process and typically we see usually a six to eight week turnaround is typical for them. Once we submit the application, if everything goes smoothly and we submit the proper documents, people are able to get their assistance and move along. Last season, it was taking three, four, sometimes five or six months to get approved. And I actually had people getting approved up through August and September of this year for last heating season, which is really disappointing. I recently had a training at SMOC and Framingham in person, which was phenomenal for us to be able to sit face to face with the people we email with back and forth. And they were able to get a lot of answers from things that went wrong last year. They seem to have restructured. We're really hopeful that things will go much better, but we really saw a lot of gaps and a lot of issues last year. There were people coming to me who had received their benefit and it wasn't enough. So they were running into a fuel assistance emergency later in the heating season and their benefit was spent. As we know, fuel costs are very, very expensive, especially oil. And then next would be propane. Obviously, electricity and those things are still expensive, but not as bad as oil and like the deliverable fuels such as oil or propane. What I'm hoping to do is to appropriate funds to be able to at our discretion, help people who are in an emergency need, help people who may not qualify for SMOC, but qualify for another program that offers a smaller benefit. There is the Good Neighbor Energy Fund through Salvation Army, which offers a very small benefit, which is usually $400 to $500 for the fuel season, which as you all know, is not enough. So there are people who have a need, but not enough of the need. And then there are people who have so much of a need that even what is offered isn't enough. Oftentimes, we run into these emergencies and there isn't really a lot of time to spare for me to make that request, wait for our executive session, go through that whole process. It would be helpful to have the appropriated funds to just be able to deal with the emergency and let you guys know what happened after the fact. But I'm open to suggestions. I'm open to hearing what you guys think and.
Well, I know that, I understand some of the gaps. Of course, as a bloomer girl, we get a lot of requests too. And I know SMOC was a disaster last year. We, we heard it from multiple areas. And I do think, you know, the Restine has historically been used to help people in need with fuel to keep them warm. And you're right, if we have, we've been very lucky the last few winters, they've been mild. But we get a week of subzero weather. You can't wait for an exact, if they, they're out on a Friday. We can't wait till Monday or Tuesday till we can meet. So I think this is a wonderful idea. You guys do a great job vetting people. That's my opinion. I think it's, it's putting the funds to good use. Brett, do you have a comment?
Thank you. You know, I think that it's a great opportunity to, you know, I think of like the Joe for oil, this is like Kate for oil, right? It, it's helping the people in town in a more structured and systemic way. I think for exactly what you've identified, sort of those gaps, right? For the various reasons that people fall into that gap is an awesome approach. It's an awesome idea. And you know, you, you, you have, I would say, you know, you, you're familiar with what, when we do have the executive sessions, the types of questions we ask, what's the vetting is, what about, I mean, you guys do all of that already as part of your normal. So you sort of, as long as you're following that process and using that same discretion and, and that everything is sort of tracked. And we can sort of look back and say, okay, what did we do and why? If we need to sort of dig more deeply that we have that information in a way that's accessible, I'm a huge fan. Thank you.
I would have to agree both with Brett and I think it's a great idea. And I've heard from a lot of seniors last year that, that SMOC was just, you know, there was nothing there. And I, I know I hate to be cold. So I think, I think we should do something like that.
That's a great idea. It was a good program, Katie. Thank you. We appreciate it. Do I hear a motion?
My computer's still loaded.
Okay, here we go.
I move that the board vote to allocate $5,000 from the Restine Trust Fund to assist residents in need with home heating and energy costs for the period of October 1st through 2024 through June 30th, 2024.
I'll second.
All in favor? Unanimous.
2025. Thank you.
Okay. June of 2025, yes.
Hey, Bo.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. So the acceptance of a donation from the Sudbury Valley Trustees Conservation Commission. I believe, is that Mike Panko on or I see him.
Yes.
Hi, Mike. How are you tonight?
Good. How are you folks? Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Okay. Thank, thank you. Yeah. The conservation commission's been working with the Sudbury Valley Trustees to establish a trail system on the Mechanic Street property that was purchased a few years ago. SVT's been doing a lot of great work. They've been organizing groups to clear trails. They also built a parking lot off of Mechanic Street for the, to access the property. And they've also offered, and this is the request before you, to, to donate $8,000 towards the cost of constructing two trail bridges. Those bridges would be composed of fiberglass reinforced panels. And then they'd be covered by geotextile and gravel and they would be very horse friendly. Some of our boardwalks, maybe our boardwalks are pressure treated wood, which can get really slippery and be dangerous for horses. And we picked up two locations where we think there will be horse traffic to put these bridges. The, the total cost of the two bridges is around $18,000, $17,000. So roughly half the cost will be paid by SVT and the other half will be from the commissions, either the conservation fund or one of the land stewardship revolving funds.
Questions, Lauren?
Great. Thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
I move that the select board vote pursuant to Mass General Chapter 44, Section 53A, to accept the donation of up to $8,500 from the Sudbury Valley Trustees for the installation of two fiberglass stream crossings at the Mechanic Street District 9 Conservation Area.
I second the motion.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Mike. We appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you, folks. Good night.
You're welcome. Congratulations. Okay, next, financial update from Kenny Costa. I can see him. Kenny, you're muted. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Good evening. Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. I have a short presentation. I'm going to try to load that now and see if that works. Can everybody see my screen?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we have the financial update for 2024. And the agenda we have, so the review includes turnbacks, essentially savings, department budgets. We have collections, revenue overview, property tax collections, state aid revenues, local receipts. I'm going to show you the free cash calculation, free cash, the tax recap as it's been reported, and also free cash surrounding communities and then also other available funds. So there's a lot of numbers tonight, which I, which I enjoy. So here is the, the first slide related to fiscal year '24 expenditures closeout. So there was unspent appropriations at year end that totaled 1.2 million, which is roughly 4.28% of a $28 million budget. You know, and I do recall last year when we discussed the '25 budget, how fiscally year '23 ended. It was a similar amount as a million dollars. So yes, a million dollars. Yes, it is a lot of money. However, kind of the way I view it, you know, 96% of the budget, about 96% of the budget, we got right. So the budget, it's, it's a plan. And again, 1.2 million, just a little over 4% of the budget. And this is all, this would be a positive towards free cash. And this amount is closed out to the bottom line. As I mentioned, it positively impacts free cash. And to the right, these are the largest closeouts. So the Board of Suckman, Town Manager, 34,000. The Finance Committee Reserve Fund, 25,000. So it varies in amounts by department. Police, a little over 57,000. Fire EMS, a little over 77,000. This is a newer category, the, the school, the Norfolk Aggie assessment. I know this is the second or third year that we've had this in the budget. So at some years, it's a little bit difficult to budget because we just don't know the number of students that'll be attending, you know, the Norfolk Aggie School. DPW, about 260,000. And a lot of that, the lion's share is related to snow removal. There was about $76,000, which is another thing to, it's hard to predict. We're always hopeful that there's enough for the fiscal year. Waste removal, a little over $8,000, all the way to insurance, which we've been lucky the last number, several years. So there was 448,000. It's another item that, you know, it also depends on how many people we have as far as, you know, family, family plans versus individual, you know, for, for each department. So it's just, it's something, it's hard to, you know, to, to plan, to budget for. So departments, they continue to curb their spending where possible. You know, we, we're still, you know, we still see inflation in various departments. So as we continue seeing the impact on different department budgets. So the review of the fiscal year '24 revenues hit the closeout. So property tax, you know, revenues, state aid revenues and local receipts. All of these three categories, these were all above 100% collected. So revenues were, were strong in fiscal year '24, which is a great thing. As you know, property taxes, that's the largest amount, you know, that, that we collect. And if anybody has any questions, just feel free, you know, to ask as I go through the slides.
Kenny, what are the local receipts versus the property taxes?
So local receipts would be like, for example, motor vehicle excise tax, interest income. So these are receipts that we receive locally for various fees or even like ambulance collections. So those are examples of local receipts.
Like building permit fees and all those kinds of things too?
Correct. Yes, correct.
It was just the biggest number up there. I wanted to, well, I guess it wasn't the biggest, but it was a good amount. Just didn't know what they were. Thank you. Keep going.
I also have a slide. It's, it's upcoming. I do have a slide related to the local receipts.
I'll take it.
So here is property tax collections. Here's just a snippet. This is straight from the general ledger. This is from Vadar. So this is personal property and real estate. So as you can see, it's listed out by year. So it's just, it's hard to predict when you go into the budget to know how much of prior year collections that you've received. That's why we're over 100%. Last year, we were about 98%. So some years, it's just, it's hard to know what previous years you will collect. So for example, you know, personal property 2024, we collect, you know, we budgeted 655, we collected 650. So there's 4,900 remaining. So assuming that we'll collect that in the ensuing year. But as you can see, there's prior years in personal property. And so in '23, a little over 10,000. In '21, a little over 9,000. So as you can see, that's the personal property. So in real estate, the numbers are just larger. So in real estate 2024, the budget is 24.4 million. We collected just over 24 million. So there's 389,000 that hopefully we will collect in this fiscal year in '25. But as you can see, in the prior years, in '23, we collected 423. And in '22, over 72,000. And in '21, 32,000. So as you can see, you know, it varies year to year as far as the collections. It's just hard to predict, you know, when we're going to collect, you know, these funds. The next is state aid revenue. So the state, these are a lot more predictable. So just a little bit over a million. We did collect slightly over by 4,700. So typically, when the state tells you they're going to give you a million 39, unless there's nine C cuts. That's what I just wanted to let the select board know. Those are mid-year cuts by the governor. A couple of years ago, we did have nine C cuts, mid-year cuts, but it didn't affect any local, you know, communities. So that's the good news. But it could. And that's, these are the accounts that would be affected as part of the nine C cuts. But you see with the state owned land, you know, we do receive abatements. And also chapter 70, a small amount in chapter 70, just under 40,000, veterans benefits. And then UGA, which is the unrestricted government local aid. That's essentially, that's the lottery money. Maybe it might be, if you recall in previous, so this is the cherry sheet, you know, revenues that we receive from the state. So the next one I have here is local receipts. So this is the, the most notable ones that I, you know, I was able to put on the screen. So motor vehicle excise. So as you can see, we, we did budget a million. It came in strong. It came in strong at 1.2 million. We did increase the budget for fiscal year '25. We did increase it up to 1.2 million. But as you can see, in fiscal year '23, we collected 327,000. And that's, that's prior, you know, motor vehicle excise. And '22, we collected over 13,000. So when, when collections are strong, so also penalties and interest are going to be strong as well. So as you can see, property taxes, excise tax, tax liens, those were all strong as well. Interest on deposits, that's just interest income. So there's a variety of things going on there. That's the higher interest rates that we're all experiencing. And then also the town has a lot of one-time monies. So that's the ARPA funds. So we have the ARPA funds. We're collecting interest on those ARPA funds. So the interest doesn't stay with the ARPA funds. It actually goes to the general fund. And then also too, we had the capital project as well, you know, related to the community center as well that we had. So you know, based on the one, so I even look back, back pre-COVID timeframe. And we, we were collecting $12,000 a year in interest income. So I, I don't think it would be our best interest to increase, I mean, unless we receive more one-time monies in the future, unless anybody has any information that I'm not aware of, I mean, unless we're going to collect more one-time monies. Interest rates are going to stay at this. I just, I, I don't see that, I don't see the historical data in the past to, you know, to increase. And we, I know at one point, we did have interest income at 10,000. We've, we've increased it. Now we're at 25,000. So 429,000, that's a record number for interest income for the town. Ambulance, so these are ambulance runs, you know, by our fire department EMS. So very strong. We budgeted 240, you know, 344,000 came in. And another one's a hard to predict on ambulance runs, you know, we, you just, it varies, you know, year, year to year. Building permits continue to be strong. Plumbing, electrical permits continue to be strong. There's a small increase in border health permits and then also trash bags as well, a slight increase right there. So, you know, out of the 1.4 local receipts, that's one, almost, you know, 1.2 million that you can see. So there's a lot of, as you can see, there's a lot of prior year monies that we collected, again, which is hard to, you know, to predict. And then the interest income, you know, so this is good news, the way I view it, good news. But there's, I think there's a lot of one-time things that are good news, you know, for, for the town. Here is the free, free cash calculation. So the DOR, they certified our free cash a little bit over a week ago. It was October 21st, actually on my birthday. So they gave me a nice birthday present for the certification. So essentially, the, I know there's a lot of numbers here, just the, you know, very top level, unreserved, undesignated fund balance. That's like equity on a balance sheet that's available. And then what they do is they subtract our receivables for personal property and real estate. So that's what that up there. And then they look at any pending, you know, deficits. So they look at grants or any like police details. So all the 108,000, the next section that you see down below, those are all timing deficits. Those are, you know, reimbursements that we submit, you know, to each grantor. And we're just waiting for those monies, you know, to come back. So that's what the 108. So this varies, you know, year to year, but these are all, you know, timing deficits. So we expect to receive those funds in fiscal year '25. And then down below deferred revenue, because our collections are so strong, we actually have, we actually have a debit balance in our deferred revenue for property taxes. So it's that actual, it's a minus. So there is the amount, the four point, 1 million of free cash that was certified. That's available to fiscal year '25. So here's, the next slide is free cash on the tax recap. So the first line, these are the free cash certifications from fiscal year 2019 to the current. On a three-year average, it's about 3.6 million. On a five-year average, it's just slightly over 3 million. The next section is the free cash articles approved at town meeting. As you can see, those are totals. And then the next is the remaining free cash. So as you can see, the last couple of years, we've had a little bit over a million. So whatever we don't spend in free cash, essentially that's like the beginning number. That just gets rolled into the next year. So for example, last year, we had about 1.1 million or just under 1.2 million of free cash. That gets rolled into the next year's free cash, which is part of this year's free cash. So we're already ahead of the game once, you know, once the free cash, you know, process is being calculated. So as you can see, we have, was about a $3 million increase, you know, this year from last year's free cash. So here's free cash in surrounding communities. So here we are in the left in free cash. The next community is Mendon. So in fiscal year '25, their recent certification, just under two point. Um so in fiscal year twenty-five, their recent certification, just under two point, um you know, five million. Um in twenty-four, it was about seven hundred thousand dollars, under a million. So as you can see. We're not the only ones. Other communities, they're also, um you know, have having a similar experience as us as far as. Um you know, free cash, um you know, as far as increasing. Um Hope Dale, um it's, it's a slightly, it's about, I believe it's about one point uh four million. Um they actually haven't certified their free cash yet. So their twenty, their twenty-four books. Uh may be closed, but it hasn't been certified yet by um DOR. Um Grafton. Uh they've also seen their free cash um increase as well, uh just under two million in twenty-three. Uh under four million and just under five million um now in fiscal year twenty-five. So the, I'm seeing this, you know, across the Commonwealth, uh free cash is uh in, you know, is increasing. Available reserves and other, uh other than free cash. We have a stabilization fund, uh essentially a rainy day fund, uh slightly over three million. Um and then we also have a capital stabilization fund. Uh just uh a little over five hundred thousand dollars. And you know, my recommendation, if if we ever look to use um this funding, this is one-time money. Um and we should use one-time uses um for these, for these funds. That's all I have. If um if anybody has any questions. And thank you.
That's fine, yeah. Great presentation. Yes.
Thank you, Kenny. That was great. What are our, what's our optimal or sort of target? I know we have a fiscal policy, so I just, I just don't. I'm like, what's the target for free cash, for stabilization? And for capital stabilization, those those numbers. Because I know for a while we were focused on building up some reserves. To help with our credit rating, but I know we also achieved some of those goals. So where are we relative to what the policy? Objectives are with regard to free cash?
Well, we don't have, we don't have a policy uh for free cash. I mean, what we've always talked about is, uh we'd like, you know, best practices. Um it varies like so, the GFOA, which is a national association, they always recommend two to three months. Um of of a free cash, uh just in case if COVID ever happened again and things shut down and and we needed to have funds. Um you know, on on hand. Um DOR, they recommend. Um perhaps about five percent. I mean, what we do have for a policy is the the stabilization. Um you know, that we do, and we have, and we have, we have met um that that target. Um of course, for stabilization.
Free cash, in terms of those percentages, the two to three months or the five percent, where are we relative to those targets or those sort of guidelines?
I mean, for, so for for the the two, three months, I believe we're just under, I mean, we we have about two months worth of reserves. We're just under the three. Um however, on the, on the, um on the, the state, yes, we are above the the uh state um target. But again. It's on the rise in a lot of communities, um just because of, you know, these one-time, you know, the strong collections that we've had. And then a lot of these one-time monies that I'm, that are starting to dry up. Like I'm seeing also on the schools as well, like the ESSR money. Um the uh money, so.
So um the town does have a financial reserves policy. Um uh most recent uh approval date was July fourteen, twenty twenty.
Yep.
Uh town will set a year-to-year goal of maintaining its free cash in the range of four to six percent on an annual budget. To achieve this, town account will propose budgets with conservative revenue projections, which we we do. In departments will carefully manage their appropriations to produce um excess income and budget term. So we're doing a good job doing that.
Yeah.
Um as far as.
That three to six percent every, or four to six percent every year, right? Like that, that's good. And then I think as a board, we should be thinking about, right? It's like. If that, like at some point, do we need to make some sort of policy decision around? Do we change the policy? Do we? Do like if that money, if we have three million this year, and the next year, and seven million the next year, twenty, in thirty years, we're gonna have a hundred million dollars in this account. I know that's ridiculous, but I'm just really being protracted about it, right? So at some point, do we ask ourselves? Do we need to change anything or do we stay the course? I'm not suggesting we change the course. I'm suggesting, I would like to be more informed and intentional about. It's a lot of money. It's a, it's a lot of taxpayer money that we're just sitting. And so I want to be mindful of that as a governing body.
Yeah, I think. Um potentially a year from now and especially two, I I'm. Kenny and I talk, this is really a, especially getting four hundred thousand dollars in excess. Interest on investments, that's a blip, um that.
Well, I mean, I'm looking at the past three years that you showed of our growth, actually, that's like that free cash each year, your cash is increasing, right?
It has, but if we took a looker view, uh like a longer view.
Yeah.
I think we then see sort of a leveling off, so that this. Um this may be more of a a unique instance.
Yeah.
Um but your point as far as revisiting some of these, because, you know, also within.
I mean, it's obviously a hostile position to be in.
Yeah.
Right? So no, nothing named here.
So connected to that, we also have um right under that, the town will endeavor to transfer a minimum ten percent certified free cash. To the general stabilization fund until the stabilization account reaches the ten percent.
Which it has.
So exactly. So so it becomes a question now, can I, is it just, we're just shooting to maintain that ten percent. So if we go up. Two, three percent, are we then just sort of keeping up on that level? Um and, you know, but at the same time, we know we have some larger capital needs, buildings and. Um you know, taking a good chunk and moving it into capital, knowing that we have. Um uh not only existing needs coming from the schools with field fields, but also DBW. Um we may not have sort of this amount in free cash next year to then fund some of ours. And that's where, actually, the timing as far as uh getting the uh community compacts, bringing on board the column center to help with that capital plan. I think will help really identify how we want to move forward in funding that that capital plan. Some of these policies, uh soon we're using a senior tax work-off. Uh to collect and make notebooks forever. And so over the next, like, six months, we can revisit some of these. And some of these that are the financial, we may want to invite finance committee and Kenny and just sort of talk about them. Because, you know, this hasn't been revisited in five years, and we may want to.
Some of the goals, and I think it's opportunity for us to be clear strategically around what's our plan for this month. Because the plan isn't just to sit on money forever. That I just have it just grow into the day like we need a plan to use this money.
And I do think it may be a blip, because we all have to remember, last year at this time, interest rates were nine percent. So not only was it hurting the housing market, we were all actually making money at the bank. Which is something we haven't done in many, many years. You know, that's the flip side of it. So I think Kenny's right. We need to watch and see, was it just because? Interest rates went through the roof, is it, was it a one-time blip? But yes, I think we should revisit it on a regular basis and not sit.
And where it's not, are, sorry.
Well, it's because we were conservative every year on how we spent the free cash. I mean, four million dollars. Is not just four million dollars this year. It's what we save from year to year, and we have been very conservative. And we've stuck to the policy of four or six percent.
This is, this is the great fruits of collective labor effort and intentionality for the entire organization, no doubt about it.
And some of it is also, you know, uh the hard work of our finance department team, really. Like going after the railroad and make sure that we're properly uh. Assess value, right, valuing, assessing private property, looking at internal processes. You know, as Kenny said, we're having some prior year uh tax bills becoming current. So the efforts of that department is also, you know, contributing to that as as well as we, you know, continue to evaluate our existing. Practices, policies, and um make improvements.
Yeah. So let's be mindful and thoughtful about how we're used this.
Sounds good.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenny. We appreciate that. It was a great presentation.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. And I agree, it is a team effort. You know, everybody in the finance team. Um you know, we work hard and and they did, the treasurer's office board, the assessors, they did a great job, uh you know, with collections. Um and they're strong, and the the numbers, the proof's in the pudding.
Sounds good.
Love it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Joe, it's time for your town manager report.
Okay, so you all have a. Fine as well. Uh last night I attended the first of this uh budget seasons. Menden Upton Real School District Capital Subcommittee Meeting. Uh you know, last year as we were finishing out sort of like the fiscal and budget season. Uh let the board know, like they had produced, they had done assessment of capital needs, and they have like over ninety million dollars from the capital projects. Um improvements that are needed. So uh starting in this year is basically identifying what are some of our top prior. Are the district's top priorities. Uh and really identifying what's gonna be coming forward to both towns um for for town meeting. Uh one of the items that was mentioned last year was that they were applying to MSBA for the roof project. They did receive um invitation to participate, which is a good news. It's still no guarantee. Um but. To dance, you have to be invited to the dance type of thing. So they're gonna be meeting over the next month with um officials are gonna be coming out touring. They're, they're gonna be basically inviting uh to go to that feasibility study uh level. And um the hope is that uh maybe coming, the hope that the district is maybe coming together to mend and up in for some sort of um. Project um request for the roof. But the question becomes, what are you tying to that? Or do they look at something else, larger projects? They just have the roof. What about the athletic fields? There's other things, building maintenance systems. There's uh many things, including like sidewalk. So. Uh that that need to be upgraded and improved. Uh the auditorium is an example where. Because of the HVAC systems they're having there, um they're having to treat for some mold and mildew in the auditorium. Uh rugs and the the seats. If you have to replace the rugs, you of course have to replace the seats and the the seats that they made. They don't make those, so you can't swap things out. You're basically replacing. So there's some of these things that is that an immediate FY twenty-six request, is it three years out? Those are all things that the subcommittee of the school committee is looking at. Um other representatives from Mendon, as well as myself and finance director attend uh these meetings, as well as the budget subcommittee. So we can be aware of what's going on. But that's one of the main things I want to let the board know is that this conversation has started. Exactly how it looks, we're gonna find that out over the next couple of months. But no matter what, how both towns sort of have that conversation facing, addressing this this need. I think everyone knows, you have a leaky roof, you gotta fix the roof. Some of these other things, you know, it's gonna be more of a conversation. Uh tomorrow night, we uh have another police screen, uh chief screening committee, so we're working through that process. The the hope is, um as we go through November, to be able to have candidates uh go to the assessment and then present for appointment. Uh special town meeting is two weeks away from tonight. We do have a good amount of information posted on the website. Besides the warrant, we have a whole packet. Any many pages of packet for supportive information. So all the grant information, some of the uh invoices, some of the supportive. Uh documentation is in there. We have all the files that are on file with town clerk on zoning bylaws. Uh we also have some video excerpts such as the MBTA community presentation that was August twelfth. That video is available um uh under the uh news and announcements for special town meeting. And uh tomorrow, uh Michael, Anton, Alice and I are gonna start doing some of the video. Uh pre-town meeting um shows that we we do and post online. So over the uh next few days, we'll be able to get some of those up to uh provide additional information for residents. Uh also tomorrow, we were just invited on a call with mass dot district three. Uh they want to hear more about uh potential um lighting landscaping. So we'll give them an update of our town meeting article and just talk about how these things can sort of merge together. Uh other things that are going on, uh DPW is uh finishing paving a small section of Fowler. And that's gonna be followed by Cass Street from Elm Street and East Street. They recently submitted the, to the state lead line inventory results. And they're gonna be looking for grant uh opportunities to address um what is unaccounted waters. So basically, what comes out of the meter and what what gets, comes out of the well, when those things differ, if it's greater than ten percent, DP says. You gotta find out what's going on. So all this stuff works together, and DPW is gonna be looking for grant opportunities to address that. Uh we're also gonna be pressure washing uh Rustine next week and uh starting painting. Town clerk gave department head uh update this morning. That out of two thousand one hundred and twenty-one ballots, we've already received thirteen hundred back. Um and there, this afternoon, that is at fourteen hundred. Uh the deadline to request mail-in ballot was today at five. Uh mail-in ballot, mail-in ballots need to be stamped by November fifth and received by uh November uh eighth. Just as far as numbers so far, um along with those thirteen, updated about fourteen. Uh we had seven hundred and twenty uh four people come in. We had another about a hundred come in today, so we're up with three hundred. Uh so my numbers are already out of date. Uh so we're up over uh probably around twenty-one hundred votes. For comparison, for the last presidential election, uh we had five thousand three hundred and twenty-eight ballots were cast. Representing eighty-five percent turnout. So we're, we're doing really good. Um in uh early voting runs through uh Friday, November first at noon, and then of course, we have election day on the fifth. Um uh supporting that, if anyone, we uh through the ESS department. Uh we're gonna be offering uh rides, um a election day shuttle. And that's gonna be on election day between ten AM and noon, and people can contact the senior center uh to get a, to get a ride. Uh the end of this week is actually the transition from the prior or the current tax uh work-off season. And November first, it starts it again. This is a great program for for seniors. You have to be sixty and older. Um to uh do some work for the town and um up to two thousand dollars can come off your uh third quarter property tax bill. And uh also, there's so far been three meetings of a Friends of the Upton Seniors uh group. This is a group that will be separate from the town, will be a separate five oh one C three. And the purpose of this friends group will be to assist senior activities through fundraising. Um so they're still organizing, trying to learn and and become a separate uh organization to support. Of, in our finance department, uh we're getting ready. This is the time of year, we're starting to submit all our financial data to the state. Um so they're submitting uh state data on sales, new growth, circuit breaker exemptions this week. On November nineteenth, the assessors will join us for a tax classification public hearing uh with the select board. Um that's gonna be on November nineteenth. And real estate uh and property tax bills are due uh this Friday. And charge collector staff is also working with DPW on the next uh water bill, fire department. Everyone knows it's really dry out there. Um they'd like to reinforce for residents, as well as this is coming from the Department of Fire Services. There's statewide brush fire warning, um and residents are encouraged to really. Uh limit any sort of um fires or campfires outside burning. Because right now, there's forty-seven active brush fires across the state, just um eighteen in the last twenty-four hours. So the wind's picking up. It's really dry out there. Um just people are encouraged to be aware of that. Uh this Fri- this Thursday will also be the uh EMS Association's annual Halloween party. Uh for, sorry, parade and spooky world at the fire station. Uh assembling uh to then leave at six PM, assembling at the community center. And then um uh also, HR is gonna be sending out a letter to retirees. Uh there's gonna be a significant increase, about twenty point eight percent. Um in um as associated with MedX two, which is a medical plan and blue. Uh Blue Cross Blue Shields, Medicare RX and Medicare Part B prescription drug plan. Uh the increased costs, which is identified in this letter, um are due to changes in methodology with Medicare and Medicaid. Uh including recent legislation that puts a cap on out-of-pocket maximums on prescription drugs in general. Uh rising cost of healthcare. Uh the information including uh all. The information including all these changes and other benefit changes are posted on the town's website. So this letter is going to be mailed out on on Thursday. To individually to each retiree. With the with the town. So. And we'll of course be following up with that. Because sure, there's going to be questions on that. And then. Just upcoming events this Friday, I'm going to be joined with my coffee with the town manager with Denise Smith to talk about elections. On Thursday, November fourteenth, there's going to be a Veterans Day breakfast. That's at the community center. And then the next. Monthly senior dinner sponsored by the men's club is going to be on Friday, November fifteenth.
Yeah. Appreciate it. Next is any public input. You can come forward. Just watch out for the chairs. I know you've been here, but and could you state your name?
I won't fall out the window.
That's true. Could you state your name and address for Sue?
It's Claire Odell, fifty five being straight up to next.
Thanks, Claire. Yes.
So so I'm here because my brother Joseph Giovanni. He used to work for this town. Years ago. And. He's on social security now. And they keep calling me and telling me that he has a retirement plan. With this town because he worked for the town for years. And I have to come and have this letter. Signed off by the clerk. It's. I had it done last last year, so now it's coming up again next year. So I would like, I know there was flooding or a fire at the town hall at some. Point, records got destroyed, but Joe has nothing. I've looked. This house. And I bought it eight years ago and I can't find anything. And social security says there is a plan. And I'm asking if. The town will investigate a little further.
Thank you.
Payroll records?
I don't have it.
Um, I should make it clear. Claire and I grew up together. She is Joe's guardian. Joe worked for many, many years. For both the cemetery and the tree department.
So he's well vested in time.
Yeah, he's he was at at least. He must have worked at least twenty years, if not more.
I don't know if it was twenty or if it was fifty. I really don't. It could it could be ten. I know this, there's a lot of people that are now, you know, not on this side of the earth. You know, Mr. Sadler, Doug Keniston. But Doug had always told me and Joseph that he would be fine in the tent. And.
So I think the bottom line is Joe's not able to assist Claire with any documentation because she is his legal guardian.
And just not actually, he's he's on. The beginning stages of Alzheimer's now, so he his memory is not. Like it used to be.
Do you have time tomorrow to stop into my office so we can just get some information against?
That's tomorrow.
Wednesdays.
Can I do it Friday? Are you in the office on Friday?
With the exception of nine fifteen to ten thirty for my coffee with the town manager, I'm available before or probably around ten forty five. And then after that time, so I could do it later in the morning. Perfect.
How do you like your car?
I'm going to have plenty from the community center.
He's like a three year old. Don't bring him too much, Claire. You'll you'll get you'll get an answer. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, just stop down to the office.
Awesome. Okay, thank you very much for listening to me.
Appreciate it. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night. Is there anyone else online that? Has any public comment? I don't see any. Do you see any answer? Next is the appointments. Upton Housing Authority. Linda, if you'd like to come forward and watch out for chairs. People think, go ahead, sit down. People think I'm nuts, but let me tell you, it's it's interesting. Yes. Yes, welcome. Thank you. And. Linda's applying for the Upton Housing Authority. Which you were on once before, weren't you?
And then I. Put my resignation in for. I was having issues with my dad and the back surgeries and everything and it just wasn't. And then with stress that was going on in the. Housing authority there for a while. So. Said, but then. It's been like two, two and a half years and things have quieted down and my health has come back. And I was approached by, yes, that's a big thing. And. The director had approached me because of vacancy. And he said he would hope that I would consider coming back. And I thought about it. Before he had even. Wanted to go back. It's a big part of my life before I had taken over. They'd leave your desk away and filter position.
We we love people who volunteer, especially when they re-volunteer. So.
I appreciate the community. I love the people. I like to choose things, anything that can help them out and whatever. So. I mean, I I knew most of them at the beginning was because working at least.
Any questions, Maureen?
She has the experience.
Exactly, more than enough experience. You may be overqualified.
You've done a lot for the community and you're signing up to do more. I'm very grateful that you're in soon and that you're feeling better. So thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
I move that the board appoint Linda Jones, the Upton Housing Authority, effective immediately to serve until twenty twenty five annual town election.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You know, congratulations and thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate it.
And for the board, because this vacancy was on failure to elect. This seat will then be on the ballot for the annual town election for a two year term to fill out the remainder of that. Rather than a three year term, because that was the seat that was up at.
You've been appointed. So then if you want to put your name in to run?
What do you mean?
You'd have to pull papers to be on the ballot, the town election ballot.
So this appointment is good until May?
Yes.
And then, but if you want to pull papers to be on the ballot and continue, we'd love to have you.
Yeah, that's how I that's how it was when picked out. So I I filled her thing and then in that.
Okay. Okay, just wanted to make sure you knew how it worked.
I think you did, but never hurts.
Thanks for coming in, Linda. Have a great night.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so appointment of the central mass regional planning commission delegate.
So we don't have any applications. No one submitted an application for this yet. For some towns. Select board members do. Get appointed to this alternate delegate, so. Just putting it back out there, just. See if a board member does want to do it, or we can continue to look for volunteers to. To be appointed on behalf of this.
You have any interest, Brett?
I did this by capacity issue.
Yeah, I I that's my issue. Maureen, do you have any desire for capacity?
They're primarily in the evening. They do, some are virtual, but a lot of them are actually in western.
Okay, it looks like we are going to. Should open it hopefully. Anyone listening?
We did, we did, Sue did recently just post on the front page of the website, a list of all of the vacancies, so. If people can share through their networks, that would be great.
Okay, next is a street sign request. Three weeks south side at South and Chestnut.
So. I don't know if any, that's the same one we looked at a few years ago, right?
Hi, Brian, are you here for the? Street sign request at South and Chestnut?
I am.
Okay.
Um, so.
If you'd like to speak, that's fine. Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. So my wife and I moved to Upton and onto South Street in twenty nineteen. We live relatively close to the intersection of South and Chestnut. Excuse me if my ten month old interrupts us. And. We we've had continual issues with going through the intersection of South and Chestnut. When turning, when when southbound on South, turning onto Chestnut during the summer months. There's often a substantial amount of overgrowth on the right hand side, which inhibits your ability to see oncoming traffic northbound on South. Similar when going southbound during the winter, if there's snow that's built up again on that right side, when you're heading southbound, turning onto Chestnut. It's difficult to see there. It it also works the other way. If you're heading northbound on South Street and get to that intersection with Chestnut, if somebody else is turning left onto Chestnut, southbound. It it's, it can be. Difficult to to make sure that you're not going to have an accident. I'd also just kind of like to say that. We have had problems with people speeding on South Street. South Street is pretty busy with, you know, people biking on it, walking, walking their dogs, pushing strollers. Red Rock Stables is on South Street and it's not uncommon to see horses coming down South Street as well. And so this would definitely not alleviate. The speeding problem on South, but I would hope that it would maybe start to help with. You know, with people thinking about that intersection as they came through.
So as part of this request in the board's packet did have the DPW director as chief. Take a look at it. The town had back in two thousand nineteen looked at the. Geometry and the engineers had concluded that there there wasn't a need for for stop signs. And your board's. Packet, I did include some photos. I went out there. Last week. And I am waiting for a response from the DPW director. I believe on the side that Brian is talking about, there is overgrowth from. What looks to me like bittersweet climb over the wall that could be improved for for sightlines. So. I did ask Dennis to take a look and get back to me now that we have our own roadside mower, which this is the first year we've been able to. Boy, it. We are doing more strategic. Mowing, so if 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 keeping up with some of the roads rushes, one of those. Things that limits, that may be an opportunity for us to try and then revisit if there's continues to be issues. On installation of the the stop signs. The through movement is really on on South that right hand hand movement. With coming down from Chestnut, it is dock control. That's where you have that visibility in both directions, but that overgrowth is what also has that. That limit on sightlines as you as you come in. As you approach. The intersection of Chestnut. So if you're coming south on South for sort of taking that right. It does look like Dennis and his DPW crew did go in. To a sort of a lower bowl area and start cutting out some of that vegetation. Because the sightlines do agree that if the vegetation was fully there, that is a very obstructed intersection. And I know. Dennis's prior comment was. We're clearing things out to maintain that visibility. So it becomes a question as far as. Do you want to try something first and then come back and look at that if if it doesn't prove things? Yeah, the residents in that area experienced it differently than our police chief and DPW. They're primarily experiencing it. By. By vehicle, whereas you could have residents that are out there walking to different destinations, maybe experiencing a little different. With that with that vegetation overgrowing, they don't have that sort of rescue area. To go into if there are cars that are.
Imagine it's time dependent too, and you know, it's probably busier at certain times than others. See you nodding. You know, so in other words, if somebody goes to work at the same time every day and there's quite a few people leaving either Goss Pond or Chestnut. It it depends on this, you know, same thing, time of year, time of sun. So it sounds like, Brian, the BPW is going to try to cut back some of this. See if that makes some improvement, some of the vegetation.
Can I? I'm I'm sorry, I didn't cut you off. Um, can I ask, would that be cutting back the vegetation beyond what a normal mowing would be?
So. Want to, not knowing exactly. What? Normal mowing would be, we have a brush cutter that then can go a little bit more. We still can only cut within our right of way. But. It is on a boom. It is something that is more than just the the grass strip, so we can. Start to knock some of that material down, which is what they did on the other side. But, you know, I could see when you're stopped coming down Chestnut and looking to the right. There definitely was vines and bittersweet that was coming over the stone wall that. Right now, it's it's. Because everything is now dying for the winter, it doesn't present as much of an obstacle, but if there was. Leaves on it growing vegetation, it may have presented more just even a month ago. So. So it's an opportunity and and, you know, there are many areas that one of the reasons why Dennis wanted this this piece of equipment. Was so that we could go out multiple times a year for areas that were more problematic. So I'm still waiting for a response.
Is the downside of putting in stop sign just that it slows down the normal flow of traffic?
So it becomes a question.
I'm sure there would be some people that drive through that would be like, oh, my God, I can't believe they put stuffs in here. But I have a very strong bias towards like. Honoring the people who drive through it every day. Like I I I'm very, we're all very familiar with this intersection. We've all driven through it a hundred times, but we don't drive through it every day, all day, every day. And so while I I hear what you're saying, right, like the the engineers and the DPW and police chief, like they all want to be supportive and helpful and. Sometimes we can get ourselves in analysis paralysis and, you know. Stop sign, like if if we could significantly solve the problem by putting in a stop sign, then we should consider that and know we don't take it lightly, but I'm just trying to see what's like the.
What's the downside?
What's the downside of putting a stop sign? I'm sure there is one. I just don't, I'm not familiar with what it is.
So just to just maybe ask a question on this is. How is the the dual stop sign in Christian Hill and Elm worked for us as a town? Has that slowed down the traffic there and decreased the amount of accidents and everything else? Because that's a very similar structure.
I definitely have. Absolutely. So I'm extra careful because I know to be extra careful. Everybody knows to be extra careful.
No, that's right. Maybe the stop signs would slow some of the people down. And I've seen, you know, on Elm and Christian, some people have lived here forever and they think it's a thought process. They don't necessarily think it's a stop sign. But there are a lot of people who at least stop and I know it's helped coming out of Christian Hill. Is this an? Dennis question?
I mean, that may be one of the, so there's references within this report, then maybe. Continuing to another meeting, asking Dennis and Chief McGowan to attend, just to speak to some of, because the the traffic study. The traffic analysis just basically identified it doesn't meet the warrants. So looking at the trips, looking at the accident data. The state has has various or there's various engineering standards that basically say when it gets applied, but if the question is, what is the harm in installing? That's something that I'd want to ask Dennis and chief.
I always like to refer to the textbook and I would consider that the textbook, but I also am looking at a road with a ninety degree turn on it. That people drive on every day and are saying is a little bit dangerous. So. I I.
I would also say that. And I, I would also say that this study was five years ago and we've known our population has grown in the last five years.
So is the brush.
Exactly. So we have both brush and population.
Well, so we'll, we'll, let's work with the DPW, knock it down, get it cleaned up, get it looking as good as we can in terms of sightlines and all that. And let's have a follow-up session just to get a little more information.
Put it on the next meeting?
Yeah.
What's the timeline to, to mow it all down?
Um, I'll check with, with Dennis on that. If we're not meeting until the nineteenth, that's probably the time to be able to dress up.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Brian, I think the short answer is DPW should be out there cutting things back. Um, we're going to put this back on our calendar for the nineteenth and we're going to ask, what's the harm in installing a stop sign? Um, Dennis is our head of DPW. If you're not familiar, he can answer us because I've asked a couple of questions and his response to me is, I don't look good in orange, Laura, do you? So as long as it's not that response, um, but we'll get it from the horse's mouth. If you'd like to join us again on the nineteenth, you're, you're very welcome and we appreciate you bringing this to our attention.
Yeah, yeah, I would be happy to join on the nineteenth. Um, thank you very much for your time.
If there's, if there are other neighbors in the area that have an opinion too, it's great to hear from more people only because sometimes if we act because we hear from one or two people and you put in a stop sign and then there's a revolt and people show up and say, I can't believe you just put in a stop sign there, you jerks. So we want to at least have some also.
Welcome to our.
Yeah.
I think we're doing good.
It's like, I want to do a survey of everybody at Goss Pond and just knock on doors, be like, hey, what if we put a stop sign over there? Would that be good or bad? And if they all go bad.
Uh, uh, honestly, the feedback from around town has been, um, somewhere along the way, people think we in the ninety-five-hundred course, you know, everybody is flying.
It's a mess.
And it's crazy. Um, as a matter of fact, I jokingly posted, they shut Grove Street to repair the railroad tracks. And I jokingly posted, could we just like leave them shut forever? Cause it's so nice and quiet in front of my house, but. So we will see you on the nineteenth. Thank you for coming.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much.
Okay. Have a nice night.
You as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Listen, Adam, was there a question from somebody on that?
I don't know. James.
I can't, I'm being loud.
Jamie Shannon.
Yeah.
Jay, you have a question or a comment?
I do. I was just wondering how, um, community members could submit feedback, um, regarding any given topic. I happen to live near that intersection. That was just discussed of South and Chestnut. And what's the best way for a neighbor to, um, to provide additional input? Is it email or attending these meetings?
Email.
It's up there in the main doc.
Yes, um, so our email is B O S at Upton M A dot gov. So if you write an email to us, we will get it and we will get your feedback. And you can share that with your neighbors. And we will see it. And you are always welcome.
If you're comfortable telling us how you feel about a stop sign now, it would be useful, but I don't want to put you on the spot.
No, I, I also don't want to derail your timeline, um, but it, it won't be long. I'm, my name is Jamie Shannon. Um, I live at one forty-three South Street. Um, so just, uh, a bit past that particular intersection as you're going supposed southbound. Um, and I'm in, uh, support of consideration to add stop signs there as well. Um, not only driving there is confusing when trying to make a live, real-time decision of who's supposed to stop, depending which way you're going. Um, but the factors of, uh, running or walking or, or pushing a stroller um, amidst varying levels of thinking through that in real time is, is particularly challenging. Um, so that's just my initial comments, but I'd be happy to, to submit it, um, through email as well to have it be considered.
Yes, we appreciate that. And, um, you know, I tell everyone, I appreciate you coming. And if you were on earlier, every meeting we have public input. And if there's ever an issue, you know, you can zoom in, you can appear in person and say, I have a question about this or that. That's what we're here for and along with email.
That's great. Thank you for thinking through and, and looking into it a bit further.
Okay. Thank you, Jamie. We appreciate you coming out tonight.
You're welcome.
Okay, next, discussion with elected boards on the draft memorandum of agreement. Um, first would be the library trustees.
Do you want me to go through the agreement with feedback?
Yeah, I'm not sure what you're expecting. So the library trustees didn't meet, um,
Last week.
Last week and Joe was in attendance.
Before we start.
Sorry.
Do I have your names?
Yeah, Debbie Amorelli, twenty-eight, Maryamway.
Ten.
Matthew.
A M O R E L L I.
Thank you. I know you now.
Um, yeah, so what do you want to happen to Matt? So just sort of backing, backing up, um, at the board's last meeting two weeks ago, you know, we had the, the sort of the draft that I had prepared, which was a boilerplate to, um, and the idea was to go out to the elected boards for then feedback, like, is this something that is feasible? Is there interest in pursuing this? Um, and so the next day after the meeting, emailed all the, the elected boards and then saying, no more on a scheduled meeting to basically to get the feedback. Um, because if, if this wasn't something that there was interest in trying to resolve, better to know that upfront. Um, and so, uh, library trustees were the first one that following Monday where they were meeting and I attended. And, um, uh, Matthew had some really good questions that came up during the discussion and points of that in my mind, like, yeah, there's this basis of defining what are the roles, what is the relationship? Um, and from my perspective, during the meeting, there seemed to be a, a common sense approach by, um, myself, library trustees and Matthew as far as formulating something that defines what this is. And that in the past, especially when the Town Manager Act was maybe first implemented under the first town administration, there was difference of opinions and that this can be a mechanism by which to define. And one of the main questions that came up was, well, what happens if the town manager starts to be overly critical or micromanaging of, of, of Matthew? Um, I had explained that, uh, first of all, I would fully expect Matthew to be going to, to someone on the library trustees complaining that the elected member, library trustees goes to an elected member of the select board and says to the select board, like, this is a little above and beyond what we sort of all understood. And that course correction, i.e. through right-of-way feedback from select board or evaluation or much more significant ways, that's the enforcing mechanism. That this is really an agreement between the elected boards on how their staff are gonna, uh, interact. So I came out of library trustees going, oh, that was actually a really good meeting. I think we had a lot of common um, ground for defining it. Uh, earlier this week, um, sat in an onboard health meeting and Laura can give that up update, but that's also something that was positive. And it's like, from my perspective, it's like, hey, we can work through these items.
Right. I think, I think in the past, I think it's come forward that, you know, there's always been an understanding that the elected boards report to. So for example, library reports to their elected board. Um, Board of Health reports to their elected board, same thing with recreation. But at the end of the day, Matthew's the town employee, Diane's a town employee, Maria's a town employee. So when they revamped the, um, Town Managers Act, they added the language or clarified the language, reports directly or indirectly. Um, I can tell you, it was a little tense at the Board of Health when that first came in because ultimately the Board of Health reports to the Master Department of Public Health. But yet there is the layer of bylaws and personnel and HR, which is fine. So the Board of Health, honestly, we sat down and we drafted our own memorandum of agreement using, that was just a footprint is what we, we said. And at the end of the day, the reason, I understand the reason Joe wanted the memorandum of, of agreement, the Town Managers Act is legislated. So even if it gets passed in November, it's going to be at least a year and a half before it's implemented. If we want to change anything in the Town Managers Act, we need to go back through legislation, which is an arduous process. So if every board has a memorandum of understanding, so for example, Matthew of Li- Library is finding that, hey, you know what? This isn't work, working. You sit down with your committee and your elected board and say, hey, we're changing this because of these reasons. So the memorandum of agreement or understanding, however we want to name it, is a living, breathing document that is very easy to change. Um, depending on day-to-day, if Joe's not here, maybe the next person isn't as inevitable or what have you. But it, you know, maybe your board changes, the Board of Health will change, everything that changes. But it is a living, breathing document recognizing that at the end of the day, they do report to the elected boards, but you know, you're, they're town employees and that's where the disconnect is. So we drafted our, you know, I'll tell you, Board of Health drafted our own, we gave it to Joe, we asked for word documents so we can edit it. And I'm sure we'll go back and forth a couple of times.
So is that what you'd like the library to do as well?
I, I believe so. I, I think, I mean, that's what worked for us. Yeah. So yes, I mean, that is, you know, obviously it's not the end-all and be-all. Cause Joe said, well, I'll have everyone write a memorandum of agreement. And I said, ah, how about we give them an outline? And then you can, you can defer from that as much as little. Um, so basically, you know, Rick, you too, it was a suggestion, it was an outline because I, you know, I could see three very different documents coming in. So, um, and like I said, when, when that first hit, there was a lot of heated discussion and we worked it all out and it came out great, you know?
Does that draft, is that just between the town manager and the boards?
It would be technically between the elected board, so the select board and the library trustees. So it's not like Matthew and I have this agreement. It's, it's the two of you, you, um, and, and it's just what we recognize or what the elected boards recognize is that relationship with staff, which essentially codifies what we do now, but in a undocumented because we apply common sense and we just work well together.
I, I think, you know, when I talked to Joe, honestly, when I talked to Joe about the Town Managers Act and it being reconfigured, I think everything's working fine now, but I think you have to look, what about ten years out? And not to demean the next generation, but they do think a little different than some of us. And that was our fear, you know, what happens if you get, you know, what happens if you get somebody who just can't get along? You know, um, are they going to say, well, I don't report to you, I report to X?
So you want us to work with Joe, get a draft and then bring it to another.
Work with your own people. So the Bor- Border Health, what I, what I said, honestly, what we did with Border Health, I said, you know, Diane, you've been here for close to forty years. You know how this department runs. Um, what do you, what do you suggest? And she came up, her and Trish worked together. And we came up with some very specific things and, you know, recognizing that, yes, we, we agree with X, Y, and Z. And we altered some of it. Um, you know, I think part of our language says, um, except if um, state case law or state law trumps, state or federal law trumps. And, um, you know, for example, like the looking at the books, we have things in the border health that are unprotected. So we add the words, except where federal law requires it so that, you know, there may be instances, but we just, we ask so as the library, I would think, you guys know how you run. You know what you do. And I think if you, if the board works together with Matthew and all the librarians to get everything correct in what you think and then put it forth.
And, and that's where, um, uh, be happy to sit down with, I think, from that conversation, Matthew and I both understand where everyone is. So we can also take that for a stab, so Matthew can take it back. Yeah, the idea is, is, is basically, um, per the, the Town Manager Act Review Committee, they, they intentionally wanted to keep some of these things broad because the more you get into specifics, the more it is to argue. This option of the MOA was to add specificity to flush that out, but as Laura said, to be more organic. You know, it's written that, oh, well, if staff left, um, you know, we visited and we had that conversation. We had that conversation, does that really make sense? But also in five years, the town could be looking to hire a Board of Health Director. And, and so it's not only on existing staff, but also on the growth of those departments, what that relationship looks like. Um, and giving some form of, of flexibility, uh, to the organization because there could be things like um, understanding, like all the land use sort of fell under the select board in the first place, but planning did it. And I did have to, with the planning board, kind of almost negotiate with them about that Director of Land Use. And, you know, they, they had indicated like, if this isn't working, we're pulling out and we're gonna then just hire our own department specialist. But they, um, hopefully, because it was partly because that was my prior life, that they maybe rolled the dice a little bit on that. But they're very happy with the arrangement and, you know, the main thing is I think everyone is, is rowing this big boat of ours in the same direction. It's just codifying that we're all on the same page.
So for example, we, um, you know, we sent, I sent out the draft and the Town Managers Act to the Board of Health. Um, we had a meeting of Diane and Trish worked on it because they're the ones that live and breathe it every day. Um, we had a meeting on Monday, we tweaked it. Um, we submitted it to Joe for his thoughts and we'll have probably another meeting to finalize it. And that's just the way we handled it. That, that made sense in our life, you know, the border health realm. So.
I think that's definitely what the trustees did. We just didn't take our minutes and then.
So just, just take the draft, redline. So D- Diane went through the draft, we redlined it. It was really bright. And then she actually went through everything and said, okay, this is, I've typed up what I see as the changes and then I proofread it. And we, we worked on it a little bit on Monday. We, Diane sent it to the board, both, there's only two board members at the moment. She sent it to Quinn and I, we looked at it, we sent it to Joe. And then it will come back to us for a final review.
So we're, I'll just have to take our decision from the meeting.
Yeah, and I can.
I can make a meeting and then we'll probably have to have a meeting.
Oh, easily.
To say, to say, okay, we like this.
I don't, so you can actually like send it out before your meeting and say, this is what we've come up with. So you're all prepared on Monday without stepping over the open meeting violation.
So I mean, the main thing is going into town meeting, the objective is on town meeting floor, like, okay, we're supportive of these, these changes. And I don't think there's, between any of the elected boards, there is any sort of counterplay. I think it's just codifying this because if we try to make amendments on the floor of town meeting, that would be tough. And.
So that's why you're here. Everything tonight is to say, are we all on the same page or are we going south on the wall?
How, how long is this article?
Yes, yes, yes. So we're all going to.
So because people would have asked the questions on town meeting floor. So now we're trying to get those questions out. We have to create the collaboration, the partnership and the alignment ahead of town meeting so that when we go to town meeting, the Town Manager Review Act warrant article is simple, it's straightforward, we're all on the same page and we can sort of proceed.
But obviously those agreements don't need to be done.
No, exactly. Yeah.
Jeff, we didn't want somebody to come, we didn't want one of the boards to come forward at town meeting and say, ah, 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 not.
Or like, hey, we don't want to do this. We haven't seen anything. We didn't look at it. We don't, you know, it was a way to, so.
Do you have any additional questions?
No, I, no, it, it facilitates, it takes purpose.
Yeah, you have to communicate.
We're getting better at this, guys. Like, let's, let's acknowledge that, right? Like.
Come on, man.
We're learning how to navigate local politics.
Anything done unless you communicate.
This is.
That's right. And, and the problem is, is like, I can't call up, we can't call each other up. We have to do it in open meeting.
Yes.
And that's.
We do, but I mean, getting the rest of the.
I think this, I'm, I'm, I think I say to people at least five times a week, you know, I actually can't talk to them. Do you know how weird that is and how hard that's our job? I literally can't.
He said, so it, they're like, can you tell like Brett or Murray? No, I can't. It's like the vault. I, I can't, and this is where we discuss it and people. That was one of the hardest things I had to deal with when I got on the board, like what, what, what? We can't, we can't, as we're walking up.
That's actually me.
Oh, shit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can't have a conversation with one other person. Well, thank you.
I mean.
Okay, so, any other questions? Good.
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, so as I'm thinking through this, is there any advantage in trying to get these memorandums, this thing? I, I'm sort of, I feel like that would be that similar. I, I'm sort of, I feel like that would be that similar in some ways.
That's why.
I mean, I have no problem sharing the Board of Health one with you. If you want to see it, I'll email it to you. Would you like to see it too, Rick?
But I'm also getting the impression that we all have unique circumstances.
We do.
Like, the border health has to deal with it, no one else has. So.
And, and that's where.
Unique enough that it makes sense to have different ones.
And that's totally.
Well, that, that.
I don't think there needs to be. Right.
There's only going to be just different ones from.
Oh, right. And, and that's, and that's where like one of the main things is, there's going to be commonality.
As long as the FSCs are good and the board's good and the RECTOM's good and both select boards good, like as long as we're all like, yep, okay, these are good, then we can have different agreements, right?
You know, I, I, like I said, we worked on ours, we came up with a final, we sent it to Joe. I'll email it to both of you. So if you want to use it as a footprint, I mean, like I said, a template, because we took the draft and we redlined everything, but then because there was so much redlining, Diane. Oh, wow. Um, Diane retyped it, you know, cause, and it was funny, cause we were sitting in the meeting and I was sitting there with a clean copy. And they're like, wait a minute, my numbers don't match up. And I'm like, well, why don't we all use this one? You know, so, yeah, we'll do that.
Okay, cause it.
It just is a, just as a template, like, like Joe sent out the draft, just as like, hey, this is what it should look like. And then they may or may not look similar.
It's no, and the starting place was super helpful. Because if we walked into a trustee meeting and said, okay, we're gonna draft a memo and start with a blank sheet of paper, that would have been tough. So thank you for sticking around.
Yeah.
And it was really only, it was maybe two or three clauses that the trustees wanted to make.
At the end of the day, that's what we felt like. You know, stuff.
I think our, our biggest hangup was what does administrative supervision entail? And once Joe clarified what it was intended to be.
Yeah.
I, I think we, we all have the same picture in our head. It's just.
And like I said, and we, we've said it repeatedly, it's, everything is working fine. It's been working this way for years. We're really forward looking, you know, cause we're gonna redo the Town Managers Act in six years, so maybe none of us will be here in four, you know, and God knows who's stepping into our places. So that was it.
Okay, that sounds good. So we'll. We'll write a new draft, send it to the Board of Trustees, the Board of Trustees will review it again, and once they're happy, they'll send it to Joe probably, and then Joe will bring it to you.
Yes, yep.
Okay, so then probably our next meeting is November 18th.
Yes.
So probably at that meeting, we could have someone.
Okay, sounds like a plan.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Coming.
Yes.
All right, special town meeting motions and presentation discussion.
So I am knee deep in preparing for, for town. Um, working on my presentation for, uh, the sort of little videos that I do. A part of it is in some ways because we still have two weeks, it's almost like more time than we've had for past town meetings. Just to sort of get, get the board feedback, especially because some of these topics, um, if there's more information or some information you'd like to have prepared, um, it's always beneficial for me to have that feedback upfront. Annual town meeting, I had 112 slides. I had things for each and every article that then I just went on, except when we got to one article and at least we already had some pre-populated responses. I, you never know what articles get held up or not. So no matter what, I have to be prepared. So if there's something specific you would like to see, I'd love to get that feedback. Um, the motions are basically, there's two of them that, um, looking for feedback, uh, on, and it's really from a formatic standpoint, Article Two, which is the funding of the DPW, uh, collective bargaining agreement. Town council threw back a consolidated, more efficient, but as we know from legal counsel, sometimes more efficient gets, when you have it up on the screen, it's not as clear what are you doing.
Right.
So that's in your packet, uh, option one and option two. And then there's another one that basically is like this long and then, well, it's all printed in the warrant and then it says. So, but also wanted to sort of get you to think about, um, who do you want to have speak to some of these? Um, we can alternate by groups of three, but if there were things that people wanted to speak, but hey, let's take care of this sort of upfront rather than let's meet half an hour before the meeting to know.
We don't want to do that. Maybe we don't want to do that. So, um, I, I do know, I, I went through, um, on the electronic voting, you know, I think they have a great website. I really do. I went through it, but testimonials, um, the, the facts, you know, it, it, I'd like to put something together so that whatever's out, I haven't to publish for town meeting yet, but I, I would like, because we're bringing that forward, I would like, um, something to be put out. I would like some type of handout when people walk in, you know, the pros, cons, or at least an explanation of how it's gonna work. A lot of people think there's gonna be a screen and it's gonna say, Laura had yes. It's not, you can, and you know this as well as I do, it can just say 200 clickers, 150 yes, 50 no. Um, it can also go up by numbers. Um, so, but totally anonymous because they're randomized when they're handed out. So, um, but that, those are some of the questions I anticipate.
And that's where, because Sue, Denise and I went through, um, a presentation, um, we know the answers for a lot of. This is, this is simple. The administration of it, how it works and what people experience is really quite simple. Some of it is, you know, dependent on what the town wants. For example, um, you always start off with two test questions and it's, it's used to get people to, to sort of become familiar. There's a haptic feedback when you press and then you have a little screen that then shows that, okay, this is your vote, number one or number two. But then also you can have literally on a screen, a grid that's just gray and you know your number and you see I pressed and then it highlights. There's some towns that like seeing that, but then maybe me small, maybe smaller, so they only have two to 300 and you can sort of see that on a screen. Others that have four, they may just see like the role, the total like clicking up, not who voted what way, because that doesn't get shown until after it closes, but there's different levels that we can customize. Uh, it actually was interesting that as part of it, it's a free customa- customization of the actual, um, clicker itself. So it can have ten button, colors. So if we actually have to merge for some reason, have a joint town meeting with Menden, they can have their clickers, we can have ours. If we have to share, there is ways to be able to do that and we know which ones are whose. So, and they identify like 10 to 15, depending on the number that then are break and that have a break. So the ability to manage it, control the voting and all those things, that's easy. Um, answering questions as far as is it secure, we'll be able to answer that because quite frankly, all these things are on their FAQ website.
But it's not a closed network too.
It's a closed network. You can't join in. We would have a designated laptop for this that would not be on Wi-Fi, uh, Wi-Fi because you're plugging in by USB, the adapter.
So I, I guess my question is, is, you know, if it comes up.
Are you, are you suggesting that you're gonna be making a presentation?
No, I just thought, well, like if it comes up, electronic voting, usually somebody will come forward like, okay, um, there's a planning board thing, a planning comes forward.
Right, well, like last, last, last time it came up, there was a committee and they did a report and we had the presentation and so, and so there was someone presenting.
That's my question is.
But we didn't do that this time.
Presents it this time. Yes, that's, that was it, yes. Who's gonna stand up and say, this is what we're asking for? And a yes vote means we'll do this. How do we do that? I mean, I know honestly, Lynn Hagerty reached out to Diane Tannen. Diane reached out to the company, the company said, we could zoom in. Um, but, um, it would have to be a lot, you know, they could do it.
I don't support having an outside vendor come and talk to us about this.
Okay, so who, who, that's what I mean. It's just kind of like, so you, do you want to stand up and present it or how do, do we find someone? I, I don't know, because this is our.
I don't know what we're presenting, that's my point. We did this three years ago.
You know, for people who weren't here.
No, I understand, but I'm saying, like, do we dust off that? Like, is the presentation the same? If we ask for something different, like, people are gonna have a lot of questions. And so because we knew that this was a complex and nuanced topic, the last time we discussed it at a town meeting, there was a whole process of a committee being formed. They did research it. So I, I know I'm sort of.
No, I get that.
I don't, I don't know.
To get on that though. Well, it's six years old.
That's what I mean.
Should be presented as what the majority of that committee voted and they voted in favor of.
So, uh, to, to sort of maybe help frame the, the discussion with the board, because the question is gonna come up. Um, we turned this down six years ago. We.
Honestly.
Tabled.
Tabled it. There was. But. Presentation was, I was there, the presentation was so painfully long. That was the first time I had seen anything tabled.
So one of the main things is if it was tabled, someone's gonna ask, why are you bringing that?
Because technology has come 100%.
So, but that's where like turning over to FAQs, how does this work and all those things, those are the things that, you know, staff is easy to be able to do.
Right.
There's the questions that, um, the motion would be read by the, the, the select, a select board member. Um, that would give the opportunity right after that for a member to sort of say, why are we bringing this? Why are we bringing this before town meeting? What changed? That type of presentation is what, um, here is like us trying to get our, our heads around. Um, because if it became, say it was a technical article, you say, and now the town manager is gonna talk about why we're adopting this bylaw to comply with this section of the statute. Here, it's, this is all, this is, you know, to, technology has changed that you're looking at modernizing it. Sort of an opening statement on why. It says.
Like I'm, as I'm taking through it here, right, like, I think fundamentally, right, like, the struggles that we're having are because we know, like, the inside, the out way, politics of who's, who feels what way about this thing, but it's like a group of 10 of us. I think the reality is that at town meeting, these two articles are pretty self-evident. Like, the average person knows what electronic voting is and they know that they're gonna have a clicker and push a button. And that's like, it's not more complicated than that.
No, it's.
Moderator and FANCOM and the different opinions and the, like, that's all really important to us. And we've had that discussion, which is why I think it was great to invite people here and Steve Rapperton and that group to talk and say, hey, look, and we're acknowledging each other. We had this conversation, we revisited it. But the average person at town meeting, it's like, okay, electronic voting, do I want it or not? Yes or no? Like, it's not tricky.
Right.
You either support it or you don't.
Yeah.
So maybe it's a two-minute, like, let's not over-engineer it.
It might be. And, and honestly, somebody asked me about it today and I said, well, you know, I know we handled it in 19, but the problem with society today is if you like X, I like Y and you like Z, oh my God, we can't talk to each other. You know, years ago, town meeting was a place for lively discussion.
And let people vote.
And let people vote. And, um, you know, honestly, that is unfortunately has changed.
You know, you, you, you keep saying a town meeting, we, we can all learn to disagree, but when we leave here, we're still friends. That stuff, that doesn't work anymore.
But we're gonna muddle that.
Well, we did. I mean, when I read against her, did you not see we toasted each other at the roast garden and posted it? You know, because it's, I mean, and I think if anybody watches.
Even Paul, even Paul Flaherty says, we can be, we can disagree.
We can agree.
Disagreeable.
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah.
Like, and you do that pretty well. And so let's do it at town meeting.
That's just a quick. Well, yeah, and.
It's so next generation. I don't know what happened.
So maybe to come full circle, maybe, it, cause I was like, I don't want to like make a presentation a big thing, but like, I don't think there's a big presentation. I think.
No, I just like, we're putting next step. Do you think it's great? I mean, don't they have.
They do. I would even, for instance, I think I would say.
I mean, that's what, I always have more information than what's needed, just in case.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think. It could go, if things start going south, we could make a comment.
I would, I would have the old presentation at hand.
Yes.
I would have.
And in fact, what they.
FAQs with, and I think we probably already have that FAQs from the last time it came up. They probably haven't changed.
I think the, the new system, it gives both the pros and cons.
I mean, and that's where.
You have to show the pros and cons. Yes, you can't be all in one way. You, you want them.
Well, in some ways, I'm, I'm expecting, um, some of the people that were against to present sort of a summary on why not.
Right.
Um, because I think this whole question, so, so think of Dave Brooks, him having an alternate, um, presentation that then town moderator allows to run through when we're talking about small cell. You had him and Laurie Woden both present. I would expect on this, someone is gonna present something saying, hey, we did this all a couple of years ago. Here's where it came. Um, I'm fully expecting, I'm, I'm still gonna have what I think needs for background.
What is the report that came out from the three members that voted in favor of? I mean, that's the majority vote of the technology.
So I'd have, I'd have to look that, look that up. Um, the, this is all gonna be on sort of the, the politics side of it, not on the technology itself. And that's where providing an FAQ is, is harder because he can do the FAQ on how it works. Also on what happened in the past.
I, I would say our job as a board, to your point, is to be balanced and give people information, right? Like, I'm not having a speech advocating for it or against it.
No, but they have to be.
But I can say, but right, but we, we had a, we, we sponsored a committee that put together the, here are some of the pros and cons. So let's do some basic summary of that that we can give to people.
And just make sure it's updated because I know.
Updated, exactly.
Six years ago.
To what is available today.
I mean, think about it, six years ago, the phones were right to what they are today, you know?
I know, I can't figure them out yet.
Okay, so that's why we're having this conversation.
Yeah, and, and the, the main thing is, is just that there, it becomes a question once we read the motion, whether or not we're being correct in saying, you know, look, we brought this forward because of X, Y, and Z. We recognize in the past, this was done, you have two recommendations.
Yeah, the committee years ago, the, the recommendation was to move forward. The item was tabled. We thought it was time to bring it back to another vote, to see what the people want, right?
And that's where literally it can.
As you can get.
Right.
Right?
And that may be exactly what you say as far as an introduction and.
You have the facts in your hand and let the, the, I know I can't, I'd love to say have at it, but I can't say that in front of them. Yeah.
Yeah, the hard part is like any, any sort of survey, um, even, uh, I think for the, our last meeting, or maybe it was the meeting before, I think Lynn had given like a list of, of towns, that list is already out, out of date.
So it's part of the question, do we want to try to identify some volunteer citizen to present?
That, that was kind of my question, like, do we just put it out there? Or do we identify a, a citizen to come up and say, hey, you know, I think if we say this was stable.
As a board, we pick one citizen to come and make a presentation on.
Well, I think.
That's why I was gonna did it through the committee last time.
Right, well, I think if we say, you know, item, whatever, 47 is electronic voting. This issue was brought up in 19, it was tabled and the board felt like it was time.
Revisit it.
To revisit it and let the people, yeah, technology has updated, things have changed, let the people decide. To revisit it and let the people, yeah, technology has updated, things have changed, let the people decide whether or not it's something they think the town.
Topic wasn't vote, topic wasn't voted up or down.
It was tabled. Yes.
To bring it back because it came up again and the technology.
But I think that would be the way to go.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind. I don't mind saying I can prepare something very neutral that, yeah.
I think that's.
This is why we're here. And that was my question was like, do we have somebody present? Do we just say this is why we're doing this? But without anybody saying anything, it's kind of it's the hanging chat from twenty two thousand.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
So, all right. Works for me. I'll 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 write something up that very neutral.
That's I think that's the the key.
Okay, what else do we need to do, Joe?
First, if you have your your package on page forty seven of seventy, sorry, yeah, forty seven of seventy five. That's where the motions start. Just want to get your feedback as far as Article two. I I prefer, even though it is longer on paper, I think the town may like seeing it broken down as part of the motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, wasn't there some controversy about things being moved together? Is this?
Yes.
Yes. Is this honoring that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so then let's do that.
Okay.
I think that's a no brainer, right? Like, if people were like, oh, you should break this stuff up. Are we fucking at all as part of that?
So let's make it. Article four is already resolved. I had two motions, one being current year FY twenty five. We're just going to do raise and appropriate. So that either or is no or. So go with the first one and then the discontinuance is rather, it's exactly out of the warrant. So when it's out of the warrant, I like just saying as printed in the warrant. So I just wanted to make sure before I then all of a sudden switched.
What do you look at now?
So this is Article seventeen.
Well, seventeen, okay.
Thank you. I was like.
Okay, Article seventeen, what?
So we either have long reference to a plan that's on files.
Yeah.
Or as printed in the in the one, we're going to have copies available. And there's there actually is a plan that's in the warrant that's for this, so.
I like the as printed in the warrant.
So everything else is pretty straight straightforward. It was really that first article that then that article two that I wanted the board's feedback. So then it just becomes if there's dividing dividing things up, if you want to know, decide in advance. What you.
I don't care if we go one, two, three. I know last time I had I couldn't.
Yeah, you were just gonna say we.
I was like, we got there, what do you want to say? I was like, quick, you swat. And then I had to like go in the back and lose the hack along up and.
Compared to that.
Yes, as long as I don't get whatever I had last year. It was horrible. I right before that, like literally the day of town meeting, I lost my voice. I couldn't say three words without hacking for hours and Brett's like, Laura, but just do it.
Joe, I'm fine. I don't know about the two of you, with you just assigning these in whatever random way, like I don't.
Like we said, if it comes to electronic voting, I'll make a little speech. So I'll have the one as written in the warrant.
Okay, well, we just want to see that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
No, no. And and if anybody's under the weather, we'll just step up like we do. May we not be. That was horrible. So future meetings and meeting schedule, right?
Yeah, on the nineteenth times. Sue is extremely hard on work with all the license renewals. That's going to be coming up for the third. So this is just the the current list. Want to make sure if there's something that we want to add on, follow up. So it doesn't get lost.
I just haven't asked you about it in a bit. I know there's a million things going on. The utility line estimate, like, is that thing just totally dead?
I am not getting the responses. When they basically said, we do not as a cause provide estimates. And I said, then can you get me the towns that that have recently done it? Oh, sure. And then I follow up three times and.
Sort of like if we want, if we want to pursue it, we got to just.
Then I then I do go out to these towns and first bind out the towns. I mean, I know Western's one that most recently did it.
Hockington just did it, right? I mean, I know they're still doing it, but.
I feel like you shouldn't even say that.
The whole thing is I keep saying, we just don't want to be Hockington. We don't want the product. We don't want to look like Hockington. We don't want to be Hockington. Hurt from however they sharpened themselves.
Always want to learn from their neighbors.
Let's let's not shoot ourselves in the foot like they did.
One of the challenges is that that project also had a lot of grant funding that covered a lot more so that their tax base didn't absorb a lot, whereas here it's a little different because yeah, it it was this whole pedestrian recreation around. They got if you not tell me how we're going to spend that three million dollars of free cash, I'm going to tell you to spend it on utilities. So.
I thought you were going to say.
A test balloon. I thought you were going to say. Didn't even go up. I thought you were going to say whole teams. Yeah, that's the other one.
Yeah, but with these utility lines.
Yeah.
National grid gets involved in it. Boston Edison got involved in the one in Hockington. But do you want to know who was going to pay for it? And we had to have special legislation was the great pace.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that's changed or not.
Yeah, I don't know either. Yeah.
That was a lot of money.
Well, I tried often to go officially on record, recorded. I tried to bury the utilities.
You try.
My heart's going to sit there forever. The next hundred years of wires in our beautiful town town.
How would you coordinate with them on those tip projects? We don't even know when that's going to be.
If I if this was my full time job, I would find a way to do it because that's what I do. I get things done. Get things done, but I don't have the capacity to do it myself.
Right. So. Okay, so. I'm good with that. I I think we should add the memorandums of, yeah, to the nineteen.
Yep.
Now it's right. Like to commend our chair, helping make that.
Absolutely.
And make sure that like just doing that little bit of coordination before town meeting.
Absolutely. Yes.
It's kind of that's that's.
It's huge. It is huge.
Because we were showing up there like, who knows, right? Like now it's like, nope, we took the energy out of the system. Everybody's on board. Everybody's. And then we're. How you do it?
Exactly. Just it just the best offensive defense. And I am a firm believer of that. All right. So I think we are up to approval of regular meeting minutes. Did everyone read them?
I did.
I can make a motion.
Okay, I had a few minor changes and they truly are minor. Do you want me to go through them or? I that's everybody I know. So on the fifteenth on line one twenty six, it said the William Nelson Trust Fund and I think it's Norton. Okay, that's that's you learning the 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 townies. And on the same one, page five, we went on page five. It goes back and forth between memorandum of agreement, memorandum of understanding, and then back to a memorandum. So we just need consistency. I oh, I will. And then if we get to the next one, which would be March fifth. I just wanted to, I'll send it to you, but on line thirty one. I wasn't sure if the email actually came from No V four or if that was the name of it. It it said there was an email sent staff. It's it's highlighted. I just wanted to check. On line thirty one. It says.
No, that's the name of the program.
Is it?
Yep. That's our that's our.
I figured you.
Here, because I I told him and I had the closed captions.
That's.
Yep, no. Yeah, yeah, I know you weren't. I know you weren't. And so same meeting, line one fifty five, it's two oh six Milford Street, not Starred Street. Like I said, they weren't major, just. I know. And then the last meeting, I think. There was something.
At the top of the page, I had to fix.
Okay.
So just on.
I just send those.
I will.
Just on the March fifth.
Forgive them to me.
Yes.
On the March fifth, I just want to sort of recognize Sue for doing this. This is a period of time when we had a senior tax work off that also was doing the minutes. These minutes were twenty nine pages long. When that senior tax work off did it and because the board had seen the March fifth meeting minutes before. She just watched the video, experienced it all with us again and you know, was able to succinctly summarize what was a very long meeting.
We do appreciate your efforts, Sue, because we remember that meeting especially and there was a lot of back and forth.
Oh, yeah.
And a lot of extraneous and I do know from experience as my many years as the court reporter. One of the most painful things to do is watch a video of anything. It's a special kind of torture. So we do appreciate it. Don't tell us that. That's a good. You I I have to say you do. Because you do a great job, but you really do. It's and and like I said, the little minor things are just me being years of. Somebody asked me the other, oh, somebody asked me, was it today or yesterday? Do you believe in the Oxford comma? I was like, yes.
I didn't even know what that meant until you caught me.
I know, we brought it up one of the time. That's your first time I ever. Want these amended or do are you going to approve them tonight?
We approve. Will approval? As amended, do I hear a motion?
I move the board vote to approve the regular meeting minutes of October fifteenth, twenty twenty four, March fifth, twenty twenty four, and March nineteenth, twenty twenty four.
I'll second.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Unanimous. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Eight oh three, eight oh three.
All in favor?
I.
Unanimous.